Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, February 15, 2012. The first item on our agenda is to receive a recommendation from the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission for management of the Country Club of Woodbridge. And just by way of background, the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission has had seven meetings since its formation last week. They met on January 13, 18, 20, 23, 27, February 1st and 13th. They interviewed the five applicants to manage the Country Club of Woodbridge, and they have recommended Billy Casper Golf of Vienna, Virginia, to be the manager pending the negotiation of a contract. Billy Casper Golf manages three golf courses in Connecticut: Lyman Orchards in Wallingford, Oxford Greens in Oxford, and Wintonbury Hills in Bloomfield. And I know Deek Hotchkiss is here, who is the Chair of the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission. He's checked out those references, they're all very favorable. And over the past 10 days, our Tom Council has been negotiating a contract with Billy Casper Golf, and that's in the packet that you have in front of you tonight. Deek Hotchkiss, as I've mentioned, the Chair of the Commission is also here, along with Phyllis Janelle, and they'll be present to answer any questions you might have. I might add that the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission voted unanimously to recommend the contract that you have before you tonight. And we also have, in addition to the contract, a sort of an executive summary of the major terms and conditions of that contract. So I thought what we'd do, first of all, is to review maybe the executive summary, and then we can go over page by page of the contract. No, no, I think we'll go through the rest. Then after we do that, we'll have a presentation from Billy Casper Golf, Ryan O'Hare, and Ryan...
Phelps.
Ryan Phelps is here tonight to make that presentation. And then after we have questions and answers, then we can hopefully take a vote. So with that as a background, I'd ask Jerry to, maybe you can just highlight the main provisions of the agreement, and then we can go over page by page.
Well, the main provisions of the agreement, this, before I go over the provisions of the agreement, just to make it clear that this type of arrangement that the Golf, that the Country Club Commission approved, is a little different than what we've had before. This is a situation where Billy Casper Golf is going to be a manager of the course for the Town of Woodbridge. The town will be directing, consulting, and supervising Casper, but Casper will be given the authority to do the day-to-day operations, hire people, order supplies for the club, and in exchange for their services, which are pretty extensive, and you can see by the agreement, and we can cover some of those later on, they will be getting a fee, a base management fee, of $6,500 a month for their services. So unlike, and this agreement provides for the town receiving from dollar one all revenues generated at the Country Club of Woodbridge, which is significantly different than what the arrangements we've had in the past, where all revenues were going to the company that was operating the club for us at that time. And going along with getting all revenues, there's some liabilities, and that means that the town will be paying all the expenses of the operation of the Country Club. So while we pay the expenses, we also get the benefit of the revenues. And the expectation is obviously that we at least break even or make some money, or there's a future for some additional revenues in the past, in the future for the taxpayers of Woodbridge. The agreement provides for an initial three-year term, with the option to extend that initial three-year term for two additional three-year terms upon mutual agreement of the parties. After the initial term of three years, the parties can agree to continue under the same terms of the agreement, they can modify the agreement, or they can agree to go their own ways, and we can, the town can make other plans, and that can be the end of the relationship. The agreement, and Casper has agreed to, and recognizes that the initial startup of the course is going to be, require some cash, and there will be no revenues coming in until the season gets underway. They have agreed to make a interest-free loan to the, a line of credit available to the town of up to $100,000 to cover the initial operating expenses until some revenues begin to come into the town. They've also agreed to defer during the initial four months of the agreement their base management fee, recognizing that, again, there will be insufficient revenues to cover, and in order to accommodate the town and help us with our cash flow, they've agreed to defer those four months of management fees for the month of March, April, May, and June 2012. There are certain requirements that we have in terms of maintaining minimum balances, where there's a minimum balance requirement of $50,000 that has to be in account, and that could be initially paid for out of the $100,000 interest-free line of credit, or the town could come up with some of the money that we have from the prior two years of operating the Country Club, and we can fund that minimum balance that way. In addition to the base management fee that the town, the Golf Commission has agreed to pay, Casper, Casper will be entitled to a, what is known as an incentive management fee. And since the date of the summary that you have in front of you, we have negotiated a change in the incentive management fee. Based on what you have in front of me, the original incentive management fee could be no more than the base management fee, which is approximately $75,000 a year. So under that original agreement, Casper would have been entitled to, depending on certain revenues, revenue expectations being met, an additional $75,000. But since the date of this agreement, we have negotiated this downward, and the maximum that Casper will now be entitled to is approximately $25,000 as an incentive management fee. So they will get the base management fee of $6,500 a month, with the possibility, depending on what the revenues are, to earn an additional $25,000 as an incentive.
Is it still 25 cents on the dollar after 3.50?
No. It's, the first $1,750,000 has to be earned in total of net operating income, and after that, after that threshold has been met, then they would be entitled to 20 percent, and it's a little bit complicated, a 20 percent management fee of the total fees they get. So if they got $100,000 total, 25 percent of that could be the incentive fee, and the $75,000 will be the base management fee. But it doesn't kick in until there's been generated $1,750,000, which is ambitious for, at least in the first year. So we're hoping that they get as much as they can on the incentive fee, because that means the club is making money and the town is making money. So that paragraph nine in the summary has been changed, and it's been changed to benefit the town in, I think, a significant way. There are certain, we wanted to make sure that there were certain, certain criteria were met, the town would have an opportunity to relieve itself of this obligation, and one of those contingencies is the possibility of the town selling the Country Club, or a portion thereof. And if that happens, then we have the right to terminate this agreement without paying any penalty whatsoever. So the town can get out of it. If, we all know there's an ongoing dialogue about what should happen to the future of the Country Club, and if there is a sale and a purchaser is found, then the town would have the right to cancel this agreement, and the parties will shake hands and go their separate ways. So that's something that we think is significant for the town.
But that's only if we sell the property, correct?
If we sell the property.
What if the town decides during this initial year that we don't want to be in the golf business?
If we don't want to go to, be in the golf business, and we want to get...
We haven't sold it, but we don't want to have a golf course. Do we, are we obligated to have the golf for the remaining two years?
Yes, except there are provisions for us to cancel, and there's some financial incentive that go, we must pay some, a cancellation fee to...
Like $50,000.
$50,000, a minimum, a maximum of $50,000 to Casper to get out of the agreement if we decide that we want to be out of the golf business and we don't sell the club. There is also provisions in the agreement for us to have the ability to develop or sell a portion of this club for other purposes, including the 17 acres that we all know were involved in the referendum. If something changes in the future, we will have the right to develop a portion of the club so long as those develop, that development or use does not interfere with the operation of the club. In other words, does not interfere with the actual golf operations, tennis operations, or swimming pool, and that is done without any penalty whatsoever. We have the absolute right to do that. The employees of the club will be hired by Casper, and they will be employees of a company that Casper will form, which will be called Woodbridge Golf Management, or WGM. And the town, of course, would be responsible for paying those employees, and we will be paying, Casper to pay the employees. I think they contemplate a staff of full-time people, of approximately three or four people, and Deek knows a little bit better than I do as to exactly who they'll have, but they contemplate a golf pro, a superintendent to take care and maintain the golf course, possibly somebody for this, well, somebody definitely for swimming, possibly somebody for tennis.
Okay. Do you want to wait till we get to the contract, or is that a question of the employment issues?
Yes. Well, we can do, I think that, that's all I have on the summaries. There are certain, there's a provision in the agreement for the liquor license being held in the name of BCG, and the town will cooperate in any way we need to, to make sure that that liquor license is issued to Billy Casper Golf. There are certain provisions in the agreement about environmental issues. The town is assuming, as it should, all responsibility for any environmental issues up to the date of the agreement, and Casper will assume responsibility for environmental issues subsequent to the date of the agreement if they negligently perform any activity on the golf course which is contrary to the environmental laws. So I think that is, that is a, just a brief summary. We can go by, go through this page by page, or I can answer your questions, we can do it either way. Or we can start right at the beginning.
Why don't we go through page by page, if anyone has any questions, we can address them then.
Are there any copies of that available to the public?
Pardon me?
Are there any copies of that available to the public?
I don't have any copies here, but you can take a look at it afterwards, sure.
You can make it easy to follow.
I'm going to make a copy for Donald, special. You can, you can have, it's public information, it's available.
We can make a copy right now, if you want to make some copies.
Is there a chance you could put it up on the screen and follow it?
We don't have that capability at the moment. We can make a copy, if you want to make some copies right now.
You want to make it down? Again, this is a draft with deletions.
Excuse me, sir, just which one do you want me to make a copy of?
Why don't you make, why don't you make the final one, the clean one?
The final one?
There is, there is a copy that we all have, that the board has, that shows the changes that have been going on during these negotiations, with deletions underlining. That agreement that Jerry is going to make available to you is a clean copy. There may be a couple of changes in addition to what you have, but those changes will not be significant.
Is it the red versus blue?
That, they're just going to get the clean version.
Ayo.
Ayo.
But we won't call it.
I have a clean version. Did you get a clean version?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I thought we said we sent out both.
We sent out both, yeah.
Did we? Did you get a clean copy, or just...
I prefer the...
Lawrence didn't get it either, good.
Okay, so you didn't get it.
Hot nuts.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, I don't know what version that is.
It's just the one that's amended with all the changes accepted, right?
Right. Yeah, that's all it is.
You got it? It's the same thing.
No, I have the, I have the changed version, which I prefer.
Right, you didn't get the one that took out the red lines and the blue ones.
No, that's fine. I have my notes in this one.
Hey, Ed, while we're waiting, was your thought to hear from the Golf Commission members after we took, we finished before...
Right. And then we can have the question answered, yeah.
Okay. And then they're prepared to go through the budget, like, a little closer?
Sure.
I think Deek might, yeah.
Okay.
I am not.
Machine does it all.
Yep, we're going to each page.
Should I do it that way? Hmm, okay.
Yeah, that's good. Do my page back.
Yeah, no, it was great. I mean, it was very thorough.
You and I are on the wrong side of this table.
We move over there, that's probably put the cookies over there, so.
They follow me in that.
I walked in close to them.
So I need to pull up the conversation. She said, yeah, I'm in there by seven.
Because there's someone that's been meeting us.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Could have moved a little.
So we couldn't go.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
But it has to be on camera.
Yes.
And that's what it has to be. They might have to wait, but I think we're able to.
Hey, Tony, what do we have in the bank?
About $130.
That does not include the...
India money that's...
Does not include that, right? That's what we have in actual cash.
My husband, that's why I'm asking. If you drive in a car like this.
You like Jim Cato?
Back to his father.
Oh.
Did you hear from your father yesterday? Did you hear from your father yesterday?
I ran into him yesterday.
Oh, did you?
And we were chatting, and I said, yeah, I see Tom's in a lot of pain. He said, how was his MRI? And I thought, am I supposed to talk?
So I'm a little buzzed.
Somebody's been driving, but he's going back.
Other than Tom, kind of.
So it's never...
So you're feeling better, huh?
Last couple of days, yeah. Worse. I was feeling better, and now it's, yeah, it's hard to see.
So it hurts to drive?
No, they, I'm off that, it's just the painkillers. I don't know. I joined the JSC, so I'm gonna start swimming. It's a good thing to do. That's cool. Go early, because it's crowded. I swam a half a mile the other day, and the next two days, it was like...
Oh, sorry.
A half mile, I used to be able to swim a mile, no problem.
Are we ready? Okay.
Everyone set with a copy?
Anyone else need a copy?
Make a clean pencil.
Okay, so we'll start, start at the beginning on page one. If you have any questions, if Jerry wants to highlight anything that's significant...
I'll just highlight, then we'll, you guys will give the questions. On page one, obviously, there's just some definitions, and it talks about the term and gross rev, what constitutes gross revenues. On page three, we start getting into the terms of the agri, two, we start getting into the terms of the agreement, which, as I identified before, the term is for three years. The town is appointing Casper as the manager of the club to oversee operations, and Casper will hire on page three all of the employees and supervise those employees. Does anyone have any questions on page one and two so far? I hope not, because that's just definitions, all right. Then they also are responsible for purchasing inventory for the club, the pro shop, food and beverage items. They do the supervision, and they also are going to be responsible for purchasing the initial equipment that we need to get the club in operation, and we anticipate those being leases to minimize the financial impact on the town.
Okay, I did, I guess mine shows page three.
Yep.
For employees.
Yep.
And I understand that Billy Casper will hire and employ all the employees, but then near the bottom, it talks about employment-related legal costs, costs incurred in connection with governmental laws, regulations, insurance rules, including those relating to post-employment costs for benefits, health insurance, corporate payments on and on, unused vacation. Owners shall reimburse indemnifying hold harmless, BCG, from all costs, expenses, liabilities, and claims incurred in connection therewith. Does that mean that if there is some type of an employment issue, a labor issue, whether it's an employee feels that they were unfairly terminated, or there was an issue on the job that, sexual harassment or something like that, that any expense, any legal cost associated with that, the town will bear all costs to hold the management company harmless for that? So, but we're not controlling the employees. That's my concern, is that they're running the golf course, they're hiring the employees, but we're taking on all the liability as if they were our employees, but they're not our employees. So it looks like, in effect, they are our employees.
In reality, they are our employees, although the way Billy Casper operates, and we assume that we're going to be our employees, the way Casper operates is they form this company, WGM. They form a separate, independent LLC to operate each one of their golf courses around the country, and they have many, many golf courses. And they do it for accounting ease and simplicity, rather than congregating everything, all the information from all of their courses in one category. Billy Casper is responsible for this agreement, that you should make, understand that. We're not going to be, if they do something wrong, or they breach the agreement, we don't have to go after a shell of a company, the WGM. Billy Casper is a fairly, I think, the number-one golf course operator in the country. They are going to be responsible for their actions under this agreement. So we have someone of, an entity of substance that we can seek recourse if it ever comes to that.
Correct, but we're holding them harmless.
But yes, it is true that, in reality, this is our business. The town is operating the Country Club of Woodbridge, and we are just designating Casper to be the manager of the company. They will report initially to the Golf Commission, to the Woodbridge Golf Commission, and the Golf Commission, as you know by ordinance, needs to report to the Board of Selectmen. They need to get the Board of Selectmen's consent. But yes, the answer is, it shouldn't be under any illusions, the town is operating this golf course, and the town is responsible for the operations of the golf course. If Casper, in the course of their obligations, do something wrong, their sexual harassment that, and they're negligent, then we will have recourse against Casper for violating the terms of their obligations.
But where is that in here?
No, there's an indemnity provisions that we, they indemnify us, we indemnify them. We are not responsible for their negligence, or their unlawful acts.
Well, we're, we're responsible initially to defend and pay for all these little expenses, and then I guess at some point, we'd have to go back and seek some type of remedy from Billy Casper.
Right.
But it just seems as though, if they're, if they're town employees, how are we not going to cover them under the union, and under town benefits, and town retirement and all that? How do we separate them out? If it's just a shell that Billy Casper has formed to hire these employees and to run the course, I'm concerned that we're, why are, why do we even, why is there even that shift of liability? Because it's really not even a shift, because we're, we're being, we're holding them harmless for anything.
We are, we are responsible. It, it's as if the town, forget about the shell, forget about Billy Casper, it's as if the town is running the golf course and hiring an individual to go out there and be our manager for on day-to-day operations, but you should be under no illusions, the town is operating this golf course, and as a result is responsible for all the activities and actions of the golf course, and therefore will be, have the ability to get, to make, to receive all the revenue. But it is a town operation, and it needs to be a town operation. I didn't talk about this, about the taxability and not, and I don't want to make it too confusing, but in the event the town issues bonds for the debt that we have on the Country Club of Woodbridge, we would like to have those bonds be not, tax-exempt bonds, so we get the advantage of a lower rate. The only way that could happen is under a structure similar to this, where the town is the operator. Once we turn over the responsibilities and the liabilities to a third party, an independent company, we lose the ability of saying, this is our golf course, it's a municipal golf course, it's run by the municipality, and therefore we can get tax-exempt status for our bonds, which would result in a significantly lower interest rate. So in many ways, in order to take advantage of that benefit, we need to be the operator, we need to be in control. And yes, we are responsible for the day-to-day actions at that golf course.
So the difference in interest, for instance, these are tax-exempt bonds, the way this is structured now, we feel that we don't have a definite opinion from Council, as I understand it, but he's looking favorably on this. The difference in interest over a 20-year period, tax-exempt versus not a tax-exempt bond is $1.3 million, right? So it's a substantial saving if structured this way in terms of our one-term payment for interest.
But how does that protect us as far as being subject to these employees wanting to become part of the town's structure and town retirement and all that? How does that, if they are truly town employees? Because we're paying, we're cutting a check to Billy Casper to cut a check to the employees.
Right.
I'm sure the paycheck says Billy Casper on it, but everybody knows where the funds are coming from, and that just...
That's a very, that's a good point, Tom, and it may be that these employees will be subject to town benefits, but keep in mind, we're only talking about three, maybe four full-time employees. The rest of the employees will be part-time and seasonal employees, cutting the grass, things like that. So we're talking about a very small number of individuals.
Correct, but that's kind of, it ends up being a lot of money over the long...
No, and, yes, and we have to be aware that we may be in a position, I don't think it's been decided as to whether they're entitled, they will be entitled to town benefits, but it is possible that they will be, it's possible they won't. But yes, that's out there, and we may have to pay their benefits, and that's going to be a cost of operating the golf course.
Would it be appropriate for me to comment on that?
Yes.
Sure. Just wanted to direct your attention on page 14 at the bottom. This is an amplification.
Yeah, there is.
And then we parrot it on top of page 15, it talks about any, any names on BCG's articles that is found up. So that, here's an umbrella coverage of that issue. The statement about the employee liability being at the golf course is really, it's kind of all the same, it says, all of the revenue, all of the operating expenses, including payroll, that's our obligation of the owner.
That's not addressing the question. The question was, these people somehow becoming town employees and accruing benefits paid to normal town employees.
No, I was addressing the indemnity first.
He's doing the indemnity first.
I can address the issue of the employment scenario as well. Billy Casper Golf will be the employer for these people that work for a private, private organization, it will be a subsidiary or a, or hold the own subsidiary. We do that so that there's no holding of any funds, so all of the, all of the activity is exclusive to Woodbridge. They will be employees of our entity, we're funding that entity through the agreement. I can't speak specifically to the town's legal requirements, but this structure, time and time again, we run about 79 municipal golf courses throughout the United States. BCG particles in this town. So, that, here's an umbrella coverage of that issue. The statement about the employee liability being at the golf course is really, it's kind of an encompassing statement. It says, all of the revenue, all of the operating expenses, including payroll, that's our obligation of the owner.
That's not addressing the question. The question was, these people somehow becoming town employees and accruing benefits paid to normal town employees.
No, I don't.
I was addressing the indemnity first.
He's doing the indemnity first.
I can address the issue of the employment scenario as well. Billy Casper Golf will be the employer for these people that work for a private, private organization, it will be a subsidiary or a, or a holding subsidiary. We do that so that there's no holding of any of the funds, so all of the, all of the activity is exclusive to Woodbridge. They will be employees of our entity, we're funding that entity through the agreement. I, I can't speak specifically to the, to the town's legal requirements, but this structure, time and time again, we run about seventy-nine municipal golf courses throughout the United States, one year connection. And these employees have never been subject to, to public labor law, they've been subject to union benefits, they've never been subject to that. They're, they're private employees, we manage them as private employees. They work for us, we work for you, so it's an extension. That relationship exists, as you said, but it exists through your, your oversight of us as your benefit. But those people technically, we're their employer, so we're the ones who are responsible for compliance of labor laws on their behalf. And that's where you get into the indemnity that protects you, anything that we do wrong deliberately or anything like that, any negligent behavior, you're protected. I think the statement in your early part of the agreement is more of an encompassing thing, that you're, you're responsible for their payroll, you're responsible for their benefits, you're responsible for their education, whatever else might be, might be in the context of that.
I think, I negotiate all that.
That's something that we work out, by the way. There is no, I think one of the things that needs to be clear in the third-party arrangement is we're your agent and we're an extension of you. You can have as much control as you like, you can have as little. And they vary, by the way. We have clients that we meet with regularly, weekly, daily talk to, and they have a lot of influence or a lot of say, a lot of decision-making, and that is, that's actually fine. We want to commit our needs. And we have some clients that say, we'd like to be quarterly and we don't have to have that much control. So, that, that's something that's going to be transitioned, we determine how often will we, what level of decision-making would we be a part of. Certainly, we have always, we, we encourage clients, especially in municipal scenario, clients to be very, very involved in our key hires. So, we would want to interview source candidates, let's say for a general manager, superintendent position. And we'd like to whittle that down to candidates that we look viable and present them to a group of you, that you would like to see, touch those candidates, so that you can weigh in and give us your opinion. And it's not, there isn't a disconnect between decision-making from the town's perspective and then from our perspective. We want that to be done and possible.
So, again, Tom, to answer your question, I think I tried to say, isn't the indemnity provision, well...
Yeah, really, it's... I just want to make sure that it covers any negligence that would, we would, that they would have under A here.
Yes.
Is covered, because if we're going to hold them harmless, we need to go back, if they're negligent, we defend them initially, but then we'd have to be able to go back and get reimbursed for anything that we had put out if it was their negligence.
Right, and they're, and they're just handled in paragraph four.
Because they can't be, they can't have no liability.
You're right, and they don't, that's why the indemnity is there.
Nor would we want to.
Right, good, 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 good point.
Can I ask you one follow-up on the, um, some clients you have a lot more interaction with than others and that type of thing? Um, the sixty-five hun- hundred dollar monthly fee?
Right.
Do you, is, is that basically unlimited virtual support? Because we're going to hire, there would be a manager at the club, obviously.
Yes.
So, anytime you need, there might be times when we want you to come out, to come up.
Yes.
From Virginia, so it's, it's...
I'm, I'm in New York, by the way.
He's right.
I'm, I'm, so it's wrong.
But it's travel lodging expense, I mean, how does it work? Are you here often? Are you, do you not have a need to be here often?
Well, you, you were all very savvy in negotiating the travel expenses out of the agreement.
So, that we don't pay travel expenses.
So, Billy Casper Golf is not going to get reimbursed for any travel. That said, that fact has no bearing on our decision-making regarding travel, of course. What you'll get, and I'll, and tell me where I'm going to be, where, where you'd like to wait until I present, but what you get is you get a suite of regional services, you get a regional manager in Ryan Phelps, I'm a senior executive in the Northeast. You have my support as well through Ryan, Regional Director of Agronomy, Regional Marketing Director. These are people who will be focusing on, on Woodbridge as well as the greater portfolio that we have, varying degrees. We are always available. I think, I think the point that we'd like to make is that, when you look at our track record as an organization, we've been renewed in most of the, most of the courses that we've had. We've been renewed in all the ones in Connecticut, we've been renewed in all the ones in the Northeast. And the value that, that we find in these relationships is the long-term value. I'm not as concerned about 2012's economic value to BCG as we are concerned about the relationship that we have with you and your confidence in us and your desire to renew us and keep that relationship going for a long period of time. And we're a managing company, we exist, as you know, to create five-year management agreements, so we need to turn those into ten-year agreements and fifteen-year agreements, relationships. Well, if you're not confident in the amount of attention that you're getting, if you're not, you don't feel like we're paying enough attention to Woodbridge, that relationship will be in jeopardy, regardless of what's in the agreement. Because at some time, you're going to have a subjective opportunity to decide whether or not you can keep us around. And that's what's important, we work on that relationship, so you feel, boy, these guys are really focused on our property, they're doing a lot of good things and they're doing well and the results are good, obviously that's the most important thing. And you feel that we represent the town well. Because if you don't, and we need it after three years, and, and, you know, that's failure on us. That's not something that we want to see happen.
Just, and the next couple of paragraphs are the things that we are going to, the services that we are going to receive from Casper and purchasing and procurement. And I just want to point out something that you all should be, know about, and that's on page four, paragraph E at the top of the page. Because Casper is, is a significant operator in the marketplace in this type of a business, the management and operation of golf courses, they have what we believe and what is, is true, some superior leverage in the marketplace to obtain the best possible prices for equipment, food, supplies, et cetera, anything that is needed to be procured in the operation of the golf course. As a result, you all know that we have an ordinance that requires competitive bidding for anything that the town purchases. This is a situation where, there is an exception to that ordinance, and that, that exception is that if there's a special source to purchase items for the town, we can allow the special source to do the purchasing without going through the competitive bidding. And we have looked at the exception, we've talked to Casper, we've, we've talked to the Golf Commission, and we believe that this clearly is a special source, which would result in significant savings to the town by allowing Casper to exercise its, its leverage in the marketplace, especially with regard to the golf carts that we're going to need and the equipment to maintain the golf course. So, the Board of Selectmen, if it approves this agreement, will also be approving the special source exception to the competitive bidding provision of our ordinance.
We have to go that route or do we have the option of either or? We'd be approving it and we'd need to be using the, their source?
Well, the special source exception, exception, uh, uh, exception is specifically written into the agreement, so if you approve the agreement, we're providing for the special source exception. And I do believe that, well, the commission believe that there's clearly going to be certain advantages for the town to, and it's going to be very difficult to bid out things like food, things like golf carts and things like lawn mowers for the golf course. So, really, we think it's probably in the best interest of the town to do that.
In circumstances where you did feel the need to bid out larger purchases, you essentially...
They still get the benefits of our national account buying power, because we would make sure that any of our relationship vendors that respond to that bid, respond at those national account prices. So, there's no, you, you never lose on it. You either get someone reaches deeper and outperforms, and anyone can outperform a national account on a one-time deal, that happens all the time. But you, you're either going to get the benefits of someone underbidding what they know is going to be a national account price, great, you win. Or you're going to get that national account price that's the lowest available in the marketplace, so again, you win. It's, again, it's entirely a pass-through to you as the, as the property owner.
Do we pay for this? It's our money that's buying this stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or leasing, whatever you think.
Leasing. And who owns it?
You do.
If we buy it, who owns the town? You said we could...
Tonight's made the...
Yeah, I think, I think we should have, but there's no public comment on this tonight. So, these are, these are questions to be asked by the Board of Selectmen to the people who are making the presentation.
So, if the, anything that, any operations in the golf course is being done for the town, the town's name, and the town receives the revenue, so it is a town operation.
The large expenses where we might use this initially would, correct me if I'm wrong, would be, you were to purchase a fleet of golf carts and the mowers.
The fleet of golf courses is the recommendation from us, will be, it's an operating lease. Okay, and that's something that you can procure very quickly. All of the vendors, we'd be able to provide pricing for. The fleet of equipment is typically recommended to be a capital lease, where after a period of sixty months, you'll own it for a dollar. Because you have a life expectancy beyond sixty months for a lot of those pieces. On the operating lease on the golf carts, owning golf carts, you don't get a tremendous value in owning the golf carts, because the residuals are fairly good on an operating lease. And that's a customer-touching piece of equipment, so you'd like to have that refreshed over a certain period of time. You can always make a decision later on. We've always found it financially advantageous for the, for the ownership to lease those and turn them in, like you would lease a car after a period of time.
In your experience, are those leases for the golf carts, are they typically multi-year?
Here's like, it is very difficult probably to buy, to get a one-year lease. The reason I ask is, we're in a unique position here where we don't know for sure what the future holds. So, we may be getting into a lease for three to five years.
You can write a lease for as long a period as you like. The most financially beneficial term tends to be sixty months. You can do it at forty-eight. We've gone to forty-eight sometimes with electric fleets because of the battery, battery warranties, so they run concurrent. So, that's a strategic decision that we'll have to make together. If you do a shorter-term lease, you're going to be paying a significant more money, just like you would in a, in a car lease scenario. But I acknowledge that if you have potential, a potential dark period where this might not be a golf course, or you may have to make a decision, determine that lease, you know, you just need to advise us on what's appropriate for you and we can get it priced for you any way you like.
This provision goes on to say, provided that the costs thereof shall be competitive with what would be charged by non-affiliated third-party vendors in an arm length transaction.
Right.
So, it's, it allows them to use this special source, provided that it's competitive.
Right.
Again, it goes back to our goal for you to say, wow, these guys really are doing well by us and we want to keep them around.
So, then moving on, and, and something I just want to point out, other than that special source provision in the agreement, one thing I think the commission was, the Golf Commission or the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission was impressed with is the marketing capabilities of Billy Casper versus some of the other people, entities that came before us in response to the RFP. They have some national programs and local programs that, as you can see in paragraph G on page four, that we have the ability to take advantage of. And the expectation is that will result in some, you know, very successful customer base and successful golf course.
Is he going to go over some of those when he does?
Yes, he will go, he will.
I'm very interested in that.
Right.
I don't want to waste time now.
And I'd like to, and I'd like to offer that, the presentation that I prepared is brief and it touches everything at a summary level, but I'm happy to go into the detail that you think is more important than what I prepared to any degree. And I, and I'm, you know, question and answering is, is important to us, so I would love to, love to make sure there's nothing unasked, unasked tonight.
Another, another element of, I think on the Golf Commission's part was the capability of the accounting and the reporting systems that Billy Casper has in place, which will lead the town, the Board of Selectmen and the Golf Commission to have current day-to-day statistics and opera- about operations, how many people are playing, how many people, what they're paying, et cetera, et cetera. So, this was something that the town will be able to take advantage of and is all part of our, the management fee that we will be paying to Casper.
For the marketing?
Marketing, yes. We pay, we pay for the cost if they, if they send out flyers or direct mail pieces, of course, the town will pay for it.
Yeah, the whole, all five of those items under the marketing piece are...
Operating expenses.
Coming out of operating expenses. So, we're paying for that separately from the sixty-five hundred management fee.
But we do have their, the ability to access their expertise in terms of databases, information and marketing analysis.
You're paying for anything that's a third-party procurement.
Right.
So, if there's a website vendor that needs to host your website, you pay for that. If there's a, an outside design services company that produces your collateral, you pay for that. You're not paying, you're not paying BCG for any of this. None of this is anything that's provided or produced for BCG that is an additional fee. There is no additional fee beyond the management fee for any, for any of the things that we'll provide beyond the course level.
I'd like to also point out on page five, the annual budget and program that is going to be prepared by Billy Casper, and you should all be aware of the last sentence on the top paragraph on page six, which states, owner, and that is the town, shall have the final approval and final decision-making authority over the annual budget and program. So, I think it's anticipated that Casper will meet with the Golf Commission, they will go over the budget, the Golf Commission will do the negotiations, make the changes, make the recommendations as to where they think the budget should be, and that has to come to the Board of Selectmen for final approval, because it's a monetary item. So, the Board of Selectmen, this board will have final approval of any and all items in the budget. And hopefully, we can do that as expeditiously as possible.
I think it's important to point out, the, the style of this agreement is identical to the style that we have with the other three properties in Connecticut. So, who's responsible for what? It's, it's a, an entire mirror image.
On the bottom of page six is the items that I talked about, it's underlined where, where Casper is going to make it, make available to us a line of credit of a hundred thousand dollars interest fee for the initial operating startup, and they're also going, they're willing to defer their base management fee for a period of time until there is some revenue generated by the club. And I think that that's, that's a very significant advantage for the town going forward.
I like for stocking the pro shop and all of that stuff.
Right, exactly. Anything.
Getting the equipment, everything, but yeah.
It's intended to bridge the, the lean period here to get us into that June period where the golf course will be positive cash flow on its own.
Initial operating, the operating expenses on page seven, just to point out that there's a requirement on the town to make, to maintain a minimum of fifty thousand dollars in an operating account. And hopefully, that, that's, that's our obligation and we'll be able, we'll meet that obligation. Paragraph J on page eight is the paragraph where the town designates the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, the so-called Golf Commission, to consult and be the representative of the, the town for the direct negotiations with BCG. And everyone needs to keep in mind and that ultimately, again, the Board of Selectmen has final say and approval of the commission's decisions.
Okay. Can we go back to the accounts? We've got three accounts here, an operating account, an onsite account and a deposit account. And I read it a couple of times, and I'm not, no accountant, I'm just having trouble...
Not page seven?
Page, well, depends on what, which one you have. If you have to markup one, it's, it's page eight.
Thank you.
Number five accounts. We've got three separate banking accounts.
Right.
And we have money going into one, we have operating expense coming out of one, we, I'm, I'm not following Woodbridge.
Brian will explain. Yeah, sure. I'll start with the simplest one first, is, is the onsite account is intended to be an account that only receives transfer funds from the operating account for immediate cash needs through an onsite checking account, that only the course general manager will have signing privileges on, as well as Ryan at the regional level. That is for things that are immediate COD, that happens to come up, you have to run out and get something, you have to do something urgently. As a cash handling procedure, we don't allow cash payouts out of a register, we want it to be documented through an onsite check register and, and recorded. So, it might be a situation where the general manager will say, hey, I need five hundred dollars in my, in my onsite account, because I've got to go run out and get something for tomorrow's event. The accountant at our, at our home office will transfer that and be available. So, there's nothing in that account anytime unless the accountant's transferred it. The operating account is meant to essentially be the source of, of funding for all the operating expenses and payroll. That also is not an account that will receive deposits. That's an account that is controlled, no one has signing privileges on that except for the officers or our entity, which are our senior vice president and controller of the firm. And that'll be something that is done through online management, and that'll make sure that we're funded for payroll and expenses and our AP and cash flow management will occur through the operating account. All accounts payable is processed in our Vienna offices. No one here at the club has to process accounts payable unless they're writing an onsite check, a check account, like I mentioned. And then the depository account is really where the general manager or the designated responsible person will deposit the daily receipts. And that'll be something, we like to keep those discreet, so that you can get a statement of the depository account, you can see what's going in. And there's no, there's no transactions other than transfers coming out of that. So, one person can deposit into it, it's a deposit-only account, and then you have the operating account that no one has authority over, other than our senior executives. Then you have the onsite account, which has executive oversight, but it also has some practical accessibility for our general manager.
And then I just want to point on the bottom of that paragraph, paragraph five, as you see underlined, and I think it's an all the, this may be a new, a new phrase, I'm not sure you have it, but we ask that this be included, that BCG, that's Casper, shall provide the owner with the ability to electronically view the bank accounts concerning the operations of the club. So, we, Tony especially, will have the ability at any given moment to go online and see exactly So we, Tony especially, will have the ability at any given moment to go online and see exactly what the status of the accounts are.
Where is that?
It's, you may not have, paragraph five, you have it? Yeah, you have it.
It's underlined.
Yeah, you guys might, you have it? No, I don't think it's on their agreement. That has been added to the second paragraph in paragraph five.
Okay, basically it's.
Says, "BCG shall provide owner the ability to electronically view bank accounts concerning the operations of the club."
Okay, so give Tony. I apologize for not, everyone not having, but these, these additional terms were just negotiated last night and I just got these, late last night actually, from Casper. And I haven't even had a chance to distribute the new change. We've been negotiating this for about seven days on a daily basis.
You know, those bank accounts, by the way, they're also, you have access to them. Access to those anytime you like. You'll also get a monthly financial package that'll include a full balance sheet and general ledger statement that'll show all the activity on the financial supporting the P and L as well, so.
Compensation and fees on page nine, paragraph seven, those are again what we discussed earlier. And again, the number of a million seven fifty, I hope that, that might not even be in your, is that in your agreement? Okay. Casper does not get any incentive fees until we hit a million seven hundred and fifty thousand of income. So the town, assuming we get close to that figure and we all keep our fingers crossed, will not only cover expenses, but we will also make a decent amount of money for taxpayers. It's going to be, it's a challenge and Casper has indicated that that's a number they feel is comfortable. They're comfortable with, obviously, because they don't get paid any incentives until after they reach that number. The next page, any questions on that?
Well, I guess I have a question under insurance.
Okay.
The second paragraph in the middle, it says, "Except as provided or elsewhere in this paragraph, BCG shall be responsible for securing and maintaining all the insurance policies required hereunder, provided however that BCG shall have no obligation to pay such premiums from its own funds." So that's an operating expense that's, that we take on?
Yeah, the only thing that BCG takes on itself is we have our own EPL and DIO insurance for employer liability, which is, which is separate from this. But yeah, it's an insurance, it's workers' comp and property, and forgive me, I don't even know if there were, what limit of property attached to the insurance we're providing and what the town's providing, but it's, it would only be to insure things at the club.
So how would this, how does this insurance here differ from the insurance that we have on the club today? And then you've got some corporate level, you know, DNO type of.
We're protecting you essentially, we're insuring ourselves against that. I mean, employer liability or directors and officers behavioral. If I commit a crime, you know, you're protected.
Why isn't this scheduled on insurance? Consultant, and why don't you just say what he said?
He reviewed the agreement, was comfortable with the agreement, the language in the agreement, that the limits were more than acceptable for this type of operation. Did comment that once the agreement is in place, that we'd like to review the cost of the coverage and make sure that it's something that makes sense for us.
And keep in mind, is this, is this separate from what we have now?
It'll be separate from what we have for town insurance.
That's different than what we cover now.
It would be a lot of, it would be similar.
It would be duplicate.
Yeah.
You wouldn't need it to be.
We wouldn't want it to be duplicate.
No, we wouldn't want to cover anything you're already covered.
Keep in mind, believe, that insurance cost is an operating expense and the operating expense is part of the budget. The budget has to be approved by the Golf Commission and then the Board of Selectment. So there's room to determine how much coverage we want, how much we can afford to pay, how it fits into the budget. And I think the schedule that was just attached is an example of what you have in effect.
And you're not obligated, I know it says we have a responsibility to provide that to you, you're not obligated. To go with that property and casualty vendor, if you've got more competitive rates. Our rates are pretty competitive. We're insuring, you know, a hundred and thirty golf courses. The one thing is workers' comp insurance because they're employees of our entity, that's provided by our, by our.
It'd be an opportunity for us to reshock what we currently have.
Of course, absolutely, just like buying anything else.
So we would replace what we currently have with something that you procured.
If it's advantageous to you.
If it works for us. So we're not going to have what we currently have, or we will have what we currently have if we're happy with what we have, this won't apply.
Right.
We obviously want to avoid duplicating insurances, that would be something that we.
This coverage you do have here is for nationwide.
What?
Twenty-five million you have for primary coverage.
There's an umbrella policy that covers, yeah, and it's a group buying policy and I'm not the expert on it, so. And then there's also property-specific lines of coverage and property-specific deductibles.
Right.
And all that information's available to anybody. But this is like buying a fleet of carts. I mean, you can choose if it's advantageous to you to buy it through our procurement, great. It's fully transparent, you can see what the costs are. And if you say, you know what, we've got it better because we've got X millions in assets tied up in our own insurance, okay, great, you know, great, whatever's best.
Okay, I thought you could get another policy if it's not.
No, it's not intended to be overlapped with anything else.
Then we can move on to page ten. As part of the services, there's capital expenditures on paragraph eight. And as part of the management fee we're paying, the town gets the, gets consulting services from Casper with regard to capital improvements, whether they think that we need capital improvements, the amount, but again, it's up to the commission and the Board of Selectment to determine whether we want to make those capital improvements. So I think we are, we have the ultimate say on any money that's being spent at the club. And there's provisions, the standard provisions for the fall, there's provisions on what happens and what kind of damages either party can recover from the other, and it's actual damages. There's a fifty thousand dollar, if we want to, if we default, if we do something wrong, Casper needs to come after us and you default, they're entitled to their actual damages plus a fifty thousand dollar cancellation fee.
So it's like a punitive fee and I, so what if there's default on Casper, is there a punitive?
No, there's no punitive. We get actual damages. The town will get actual damages. Basically, we terminate the agreement, they're out, and anything that it costs us to make us whole, we can recover from Casper. But Caspers are the, you know, they don't want to be put in the position where the town intentionally defaults and what we do is pay them what we owe and the deal is over. They want to make sure that, that we, that if they do something wrong, if we default, they're entitled to a fifty thousand dollar cancellation, cancellation. That was an element of significant discussions in our negotiations. I would have rather had that out frankly, but it's something that is standard in their agreements and it's something that they felt strongly with about.
Okay, so if there's a default on payment, this five percent interest.
Yes.
Beyond the due date, but if we're, if we are disputing something and as a result of the dispute go beyond the date, is there any, anywhere, I didn't see anything in here where we would not be charged interest? If we're actively in a dispute period where we go to Billy Casper ahead of time and say, all right, we disagree with this particular payment or bill that's owed and we want to let you know because it's coming up. And we get into some type of a dispute resolution and we go beyond that payment, that beyond that date, are we going to be subject to a late payment interest on that payment if we go beyond that payment date? I don't think we should if we're both actively trying to negotiate through a dispute type of resolution that we shouldn't be penalized for that with additional interest.
As a general rule, we would not pay any interest, as, emphatically, we would not pay any interest on something that we did not pay because we had the, we believed that we didn't have to make the payment. If we felt it was legitimately being withheld, we wouldn't pay the interest.
Right, but if.
And no court would order us to pay interest if we were right on the dispute, on the merits of the dispute.
In other words, if we were terminating for cause, none of this would apply.
Right, exactly.
Right, but if we were, if we were disputing some type of a payment that they said we owed. Now, I assume, you know, of course, nothing personal, but you would expect to get interest paid if it went beyond your date. And I would expect them to if there's nothing in the contract that says that we, they don't collect the interest if we go beyond that date. So I understand if we go to, if something, it gets that bad that we actually have to go to court, which I would hope never happens, that court would probably, they would probably say, all right, then you owe this amount and the interest is waived because you were correct and it was a lower amount. But is that something that should be in the contract? Or is that something that typically is in the contract?
No. I think, I think the law generally would cover us if it got to court. And if it didn't get to court, we would not make an interest payment that we did not think we needed to make. And I can't see Casper, there's no way they would get the interest payment because we would make it. If they went to court and we were right, court wouldn't order us to pay it. So I think we're pretty well covered. It's not a bad point, it would be nice, but it's not necessary to have it in there, that's my legal.
This is on our management fee, because there is no other. You know, the accounts payable for the golf course is your obligation. Beyond that, you're subject to the interest on those accounts, not to us. But yeah, I mean, I think what it is, it's a general protection. Should, for some reason, the town be unable to meet its obligation in that, I mean, it's just a provision.
If we default, we should be subject to that.
Yeah, and I think you see.
If it's a default because it's something we're disputing, then that's a different story.
Yeah, I think, I hope you see our intentions in the interest-free loan that we're willing to give, that that's not a major concern for us. It's just something that's a protection of the agreement.
So on page twelve, unless anybody has any question up to that point, I think we, I just, I highlighted a couple of the issues, the times when the town can terminate this agreement and I'll just go over it again quickly. Paragraph C on page twelve provides for owner's reserve right of termination for cause. And cause is identified in that paragraph to mean that if Casper does not, does not equal or exceed seventy-five percent of the budgeted net operating income, in other words, what they tell us we're going to be doing in net operating income, and they don't hit that, hit at least seventy-five percent of that number in two consecutive years, we can say, bye, the third year is out. So if they do everything right, if they're doing a superb job managing the club properly and everybody is pleased, but they don't meet those thresholds, then we still have the right to cancel the agreement and say, thank you very much. We're going to go someplace else for the management.
But doesn't it also allow them to make up the difference to get them to seventy-five percent? So if they get to seventy-four percent.
They can throw it in.
They can throw in a one percent, keep the contract, and then that would, we would not be able to enforce that provision.
Right, right.
It seems like seventy-five percent of what they say, it seems like a big gap to me to get three quarters of the way. We think that, and the numbers that we're looking at for, for rounds is, I think, very aggressive based on what we've had in the past. We can get into that later.
You can talk about that.
But, but that's just, I saw that and I thought, geez, you know, if I could get three quarters of my job done and then be, you know, still have a job, I'd be really thrilled with that. But, you know, I just look at it and say, that's, that seems like a lot, seventy-five percent. Now, is that something you have with all the other businesses that you, courses that you do business with?
There are inherent risks in this business and there are uncontrollable factors and controllable factors. So I think the spread there between a hundred and seventy-five is meant to account for that combination. You know, if it's, it is a large variance, but what that allows for is you take years like last year where April, May, you know, August, we had record rainfall before there was a hurricane, right? And then, you know, some of those things, what that does is provides for something where there's, where there's significant poor performance on our part that's deemed controllable. And if you get down that far, then I think we'd all agree it's controllable. But you have, you have a right of termination if that happens for two consecutive years. So, but you're right about the opportunity to make that whole. Sure, I mean, it's, if it's advantageous to us to buy a whole bunch of memberships, you know, maybe that's, you know, I become a member. But, you know, I mean, that's, I don't mean to make light of it, but yeah, it's meant to protect your financial return, however, however it comes.
The other, there's two other provisions that allow the town to terminate. And one on paragraph D is entitled, "Termination for Convenience." And again, if for some reason or other we want to make a change, the town has the ability to cancel this contract. It doesn't, it's not without some penalty to us and we would have to pay half of what is owed on the remaining portion of the agreement. So if we did it in, at the end of year two, we said, we just want out, you know, you guys, it's just not a good marriage, and the base management fee was seventy-five thousand dollars, we'd have to pay half of that as a penalty to get it out of the contract if we wanted to do it. So there is some, we could do it in year two if we wanted to. So there is another provision for the town to cancel this agreement and part ways with Casper.
But it's not less than fifty thousand?
Not less than fifty thousand dollars, right. So that is the penalty that we, we would pay for the convenience of being able to say, thank you, but no thank you.
So basically, to be financially, we're not going to want to pay out anywhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars or whatever it happens to be. So we enter into this contract regardless of what, unless the town decides that they want to eat that.
Yeah, unless there's a reason to do it, unless there's another opportunity that we think is better, it may be financially justifiable to pay the fifty thousand dollars.
Except for a sale of the property.
Sale of property, there's no.
After a year.
Right.
Right, after a year.
Well, yeah, the first year, we.
First year, so after the first year, we can, we can terminate if we decide that we have a buyer.
Yes.
And we, and the town decides that they don't want to be in the golf business anymore, then we, there's no, no penalty there.
No penalty, right.
But if it's anything other than that, it's subject to this here, the fifty.
Termining the agreement being only three years is in your favor in that regard. Because you may find yourselves, you know, it's eight months away from the end of the third year and you would just let it go, let it ride and we manage it out the rest of the year and it's a cheap, you know, you get the services as well. So, you know, I think that's probably something that's looked at a lot more closely if you have a five or a seven-year agreement where your financial out might be substantial.
The sale part of this agreement is something we negotiated, wasn't in there originally and the Golf Commission specifically asked for that. And I continued, there was a penalty in there at first and Casper's agreed to waive that penalty for the sale. So, yes, the, and also we look at, it doesn't start until after the two thousand and twelve season, but it's probably unlikely they were going to be able to sell it, even if the town wants to sell it within a year. So that's the reasons for, I don't think that provision is harmful. Again, the next clause that I pointed out was the liquor license, BCG. You know, there was a question whether the town would hold the liquor license or BCG would hold the liquor license. We prefer BCG for obvious reasons. They've agreed to be the holder of the license and we've agreed to cooperate with them if, and do whatever we need to make sure that the liquor license is in effect. Next page, again, Tom, as you brought up properly, there are indemnity provisions on the bottom of paragraph fourteen, which protect the town in the event that Casper acts improperly or negligently. There is a confidentiality, confidentiality provision in the agreement, which I think is self-explanatory and I don't need to cover. The next significant item, as I discussed earlier, on bottom of page sixteen, the environmental issues. Again, we're responsible for everything at that golf course up until the date of disagreement thereafter. If they are negligent in enforcing environmental laws and they're going to have an obligation to make sure they comply with all environmental laws because there's a sentence that is not in your agreement that we just added again last night and that says, "BCG shall operate the club in compliance with all environmental laws concerning the use and application of pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers and any, any and all other chemicals utilized in the operation of golf course." So that sentence will be in there. They will have the burden to make sure that it's done properly and if it's not, we have recourse against them.
But we're still paying for it. That's coming out of operating expenses.
Pesticides, herbicides, yes, that's part of the operating expenses. The next, there are a couple pages of just boilerplate language that, about notices, counterparts, waivers, partnerships, which I won't go into unless you all have, anybody has a question. The next significant paragraph is paragraph R on the bottom of page nineteen, which I identified earlier, concerning the town's right. We wanted to make sure that if an opportunity came up, we would not be, we would not have our hands tied behind our backs. And if an opportunity did, does come up to develop either seventeen acres or any portion of a golf course and we don't know what the future is going to bring, we do have the right to go forward with those plans. Casper will accept it so long as we don't interfere with the operations of the golf course. And that's that paragraph. And then I think we come to the signature page and that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.